I got a note that said, "Request Control."
Thank you, everyone. My name is Michael Santoro. Let me do this for a minute. I'm the Director of Policy and Research for the Department of Housing. Thank you for attending today's virtual public hearing on the amendment to the Fiscal 1920 Action Plan for Housing and Community Development, specifically to address COVID-19 funding, which is flowing to the Department of Housing from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I have before you today's agenda. I'm going to do a little bit of general housekeeping and give you some instructions. Right now, everybody is muted. You do have the ability to unmute yourself. I ask that you don't, just to be courteous to everybody else. This is intended to be a public hearing, so we will be speaking and hearing from individual speakers as we go along. I'll talk about that right now. Anyone who is a public official and would like to speak, please, in the chat box, send a note to Laura Watson indicating that you would like to speak. If you don't know how to open the chat box, if you scroll towards the bottom of the screen with your mouse, if you are on video, you will see a button that says, "Show Conversation." A chat bar will open on your right at the very bottom. Again, please indicate in the box that you would like to speak. Laura will be developing a list, and we will get you up in as orderly a fashion as possible. If you are a public official, please notify Laura that you are a public official. We will prioritize, for the first hour, any and all public officials who appear. Very quickly, everybody, we are asking that you limit your testimony to five minutes. If anything is unclear, I may direct a question at you. If you, as an attendee, have a question for one of the prior speakers, would you please, in the chat box, indicate that you have a question? And after the public hearing is closed, if people want to hang around, we can try to answer some questions. I will hopefully answer some of your questions in advance. I will be doing a very short summary of our plan. With that, again, if you are interested in speaking, please send a chat to Laura Watson that you are interested in speaking. And again, if you're a public official, please let her know that. If you don't know how to open your chat box, unmute yourself on the phone by dialing *6 or in the Teams app by on the action bar, clicking the unmute button. That being said, I will add one more person. We are up over 35 attendees, so please, don't unmute yourself unnecessarily. When it is your turn to speak, please feel free to comment on the plan. Again, you should all be seeing the virtual agenda. This is the intended process for today. Again, rules, as I said, we ask that you try to limit your testimony to five minutes. You are, of course, encouraged to provide written testimony as well. Public comment period for electronic submission is through, call it midnight tomorrow evening on the 29th. If I come in on the 30th, then there's stuff in the ct.housing plans inbox. We'll take it anyway. So, thank you. Let me do that. Okay. I will switch over to our plan. This is up on the department's website. It was emailed, blasted out to our community partners, alumnus leaders, members of the legislature, the governor's office, et cetera. I won't read it, but what I will say to you is, this action plan is intended specifically to amend the activities in the original 1920 Action Plan for Housing and Community Development to deal specifically with the first allocation of COVID-19 funding being provided to the Department of Housing by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Specifically, we will be getting funds under the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, HOPWA, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, CARES Act program. These funds are coming through the Department of Housing, and, as I indicated, this is the first wave. The chart in front of you is what we expect to get with this first allocation. So, under Small Cities, CDBG CARES, about 8.1. Under ESG, COVID, about also 8.1, and under HOPWA, about $38,000. Our plan spells out, in the broadest sense, how we expect to spend these funds. I will do a very brief summary for you on the eligible activities. Starting with, and I apologize for the scrolling, starting with CDBG Block Grant CARES. The little over $8.138 million will be allocated as follows. Oh, and Laura is telling me the agenda is up, so hold on. Let me take that down. Sorry, this is a learning, this is a learning opportunity for all of us. And there we go. Should I have it now? Okay, sorry about that. So, let me back up just a little. Pardon the scrolling again. We expect to get, again, $8,138,549 in CDBG, $8,159,579 in ESG COVID, and about $38,000 in HOPWA. Again, I'm going to scroll, so I apologize if it plays with your eyes. Dealing with CDBG first, we expect to get 8.138,549. We will pull aside 2% for administrative authorization and the 1%, which we are allowed to pull aside for technical assistance. Technical assistance will be for our grantees under CDBG. For those of you who don't know, CDBG Small Cities grants to municipalities. The municipalities have to develop a plan on how they will spend their portion of the funds. All eligible communities, all eligible small cities are encouraged to apply. There are a number of limitations under the CBG program which have been waived, including shorter citizen participation, which we are seeing played out before your very eyes, as well as no limitations on public service. Normally, there's a 15% cap on public service activities, and that has been waived. Eligible uses, we intend, can be found in Table 1. I ask you to review it. But the most important thing that I can tell you with regard to these eligible activities is, we encourage our grantees, municipalities, to work with their local not-for-profits and service providers to determine how best to spend CDBG funds they choose to apply for. And I want to make it clear, it is a choice. Municipalities have to apply for these funds. It will be an expedited application process, very limited submissions, but it does require citizen participation, and it does require municipality to determine how they will spend the funds. Next, again, I apologize for the scrolling, ESG. Under ESG, we expect to get $8,159,579. We expect, among the eligible activities, to spend this first distribution of funds in accordance with the federal guidance. It is spelled out in detail in our plan as to what that federal guidance is, along with waivers. But in short, our priorities can be found in Table 1 of that section. $4 million on rapid rehousing, 1.250 on the expansion of shelter funding for operations and activities, 2.8 million for a new eviction prevention program, which will be targeted at individuals and families who were negatively affected by COVID-19 and are now pending eviction as a result, and will also be looking to invest about $100,000 in telehealth technology to support our shelters in providing health care services to our homeless population. Finally, HOPWA, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. We expect to receive $38,000 and a little bit of change, and bear with me. $38,662. We have two contracted grantees right now. We will prorata allocate those funds to those two grantees. In short, that is what we intend to do with our funds. At this time, I'm going to ask Laura to identify any public officials who have chosen to publicly testify on our plan. I will have the plan open, so if, as you go through, you'd like me to highlight a specific section of the plan, please do not hesitate to let me know, and I will do that. I think I have everybody in. So, Laura, who is up? And I'm seeing I have only one person signed up to testify so far. So, before I go to that person, if you would like to testify about today's amendment, please open your chat box and send Laura Watson a text indicating you would like to testify. In addition, if you are calling on the phone and do not have video capability, so you can't chat, please unmute yourself right now. Introduce yourself slowly. Indicate if you are a public official and would like to testify. So, if you're on video, please send Laura a chat. If you're not, then please unmute yourself and let us know you'd like to testify.
Hi, Mike. This is State Representative Brandon McGee. I'd like to testify.
Brandon, you are very soft. You might want to turn your mic up, but thank you.
Um, I am actually screaming, so I'm not sure what's going on here.
Oh, that's a little better. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'll mute myself, but I do, I would like to make a comment, and I have a question.
Absolutely, sir. Anyone else?
Senator Anwar here, too.
Senator Anwar, I got your, your note from Laura. We'll add, we'll put you up early. I see that you are still at the hospital, so we'll do our best to accommodate you, sir. Any other public officials? All right. The understanding that you are, in fact, still on the front line, Senator Anwar, I'm going to ask you to testify first. You are up, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for doing this. I know that, at the present time, many of, actually, all of our CANS have done heroic work in collaboration with the Department of Housing to provide safe, and the safe is a different safe nowadays with the current pandemic, places for people to stay who are in, were in shelters or were homeless. So, there is financial obligations that are associated with it. The question is that, is the OPM going to help that out through this process? And I know that if you look at the acceptable funding for, that's, that's in this report, I want to make sure that if this goes to the municipalities, then I don't want our CANS not to get the money and then wait and reach out to the municipalities and their processes. So, how can the CANS be made full? Because we need to make sure that they're supported, and it's going to be a critical need, not only right now, but going forward. So, that's going to be one important aspect. The second part is going to be that if it goes to the municipalities and they choose to have their own priorities, which is understandable, then is that going to harm the, our CANS, who have been doing some important work? So, those were the two important things I wanted to bring up to everybody's attention. Otherwise, I want to thank everyone, and then thank everyone for the work that they have done at this critical time, which is lifesaving work that all the advocates have done for the homeless communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Anwar, and I believe you reached out to Secretary McCaw with just that issue, and you should be getting a response to that specific question later today to give you some more detail. I will tell you, we will be doing any and all things necessary and available to make sure that our CANS receive, and our CAN service providers receive, all the funding for which they are eligible and which is at our disposal. So, thank you. Next up, I believe, Representative McGee. If you will unmute yourself, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mike, and to all of your staff, and hope each and every one of you are safe and well. My comments, first of all, I cannot thank you all enough for your leadership and the work that you all have been doing to respond to the many challenges within this new norm that we're all faced with. I think Senator Anwar, he asked a question. We were all signees to that letter that went over to OPM and to the Commissioner of Housing and the administration. I'm very familiar with these funds, and I know that they have very specific criteriums that we have to abide by, so I understand it. I guess my question, though, would be more along the lines of perhaps encouraging our municipalities to partner with, you know, our coordinated access networks, and again, recognizing that each small municipalities will have a list of priorities and, you know, ways that they think they should best spend the dollars, and I support that. I have a small town, the town of Windsor, will, will also be a part of this as well, so I get it. But I think, on behalf of your two chairs here of housing, we would be remiss if we didn't at least support the ask, and hopefully, from there, we can figure out how to best, you know, move toward a goal of providing the necessary financial resources needed. So, that's all I have. Please just keep up the great work, and we'll keep fighting together to respond and support all of our folks out there working. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McGee, and you will, you will also be copied on the response from the secretary, so you'll get a more direct answer that I think should satisfy both points. One other thing I wanted to break, bring up that I didn't make clear in my opening, this is just the first allocation of CDBG and ESG. All indications from HUD are that we will be getting of both CDBG and ESG for the state of Connecticut. In addition, there's information that leads us to believe that there will, in fact, be a third wave of funding that will be needs-based. HUD is very unclear at this time what they mean by "needs-based," and we hope to have the ability to input into that needs formula as we go forward. So, this is really just the first allocation. The second wave is expected before the end of May, and we look forward to getting those funds as well. I'm going to ask Laura, are there any other public officials who indicated a desire to speak? Okay, so that means the next person up is Ms. Amy Eppler Epstein. Amy, if you would unmute yourself, the floor is yours.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. You're doing a great job in this new reality. I think the last time I saw you, I had crashed your Zoom meeting for, when I came for a hearing, so we're doing great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking today on behalf of all the legal services programs, as well as a group that's been meeting of legal services programs, and the Connecticut Legal Rights Project, and the Connecticut Fair Housing Center. And what we have been concerned with and working on and had dialogue already with DOH and look forward to further dialogue, is how to prevent the next, what I've been thinking about as the, after, after the public health pandemic, the, the next wave of pandemic of homelessness. What we're concerned with is the large numbers of tenants who are unable to pay their rent for no fault of their own, because they have been abiding by the governor's requirements, and, and, you know, their workplaces have closed down, and they're not at home. And so, we know that there's a moratorium on eviction right now, but after July 1st, which is the current end of that moratorium, we're trying to look ahead, think of how can we avoid a massive new problem, a new wave of homelessness, when all those people who haven't been able to pay their rent are then stuck in a situation? What happens after that? So, we've been trying to work creatively and come up with a proposal, and we know that the current ESG funds have some funding for that, and we think undoubtedly, you know, what's currently in the life, in the budget will not be enough, and that we urge the state to be doing great advocacy on the federal level, because ultimately, we think the federal government should be, you know, hoping to, to step into this situation, because it's undoubtedly not just a Connecticut problem, but a problem around the country. With that, and, and what we're, we're thinking about it as a sort of, how do we stabilize the rental market and, and prevent this problem down the road for the benefit, not just of tenants, but also landlords, many of whom are small landlords, where that's their income, is their rental income from their tenants. So, we will be, when, when, the reason I was late in registering, we've been working on trying to come up with, we've sent a lot of comments, and different parties, and we're trying to come up with one unified, detailed proposal. We are fine-tuning it and working on the end results of that, and expect, hopefully by, maybe by your deadline of midnight tomorrow, if not soon thereafter, but hopefully by then. And I want to outline for you a few of the guiding principles that we're hoping will be included in this proposal. And again, our thought is that DOH, given that the moratorium on evictions right now goes till July 1st, we have basically two months in which to get this set up and running, and hopefully happening, so that we can head off an emergency before it starts. I'll tell you what we're thinking of as the sort of guiding principles of such a program, that it should not be based on eviction actions in court, but instead should be trying to prevent eviction actions being filed, because that adds more cost and stress and lots of other problems that don't need to be there, so that people should be able to access these funds in lieu of filing for eviction and before filing for eviction. Although, to the extent that there are some evictions cases that were filed before the moratorium went into effect, or, or between the time period of, of when the public health emergency started, you know, those, those, those evictions might be eligible for this as well, that we want to make sure that all tenants are eligible regardless of their immigration status. And I would just say, in regards to that, that I know that there may be restrictions on federal funds, but that some federal funds, as I understand it, can be, that you can use some state funds for funding something that would help people of all immigrant statuses, and then use the federal funds to reimburse the state fund. So, we think that's really an important criteria, that everybody in our state should be covered, and that people who have been affected by the pandemic in any way, whether it's a loss of job, reduction in hours, inability to find work, illness of a head of household or a household member, inability to work because of providing childcare for their kids who are not in school, additional expenses, whether they're medical, funeral, other such expenses, any of those kinds of things that affect somebody's ability to pay rent, should make them eligible. We think that landlords should be the primary people who should go and apply for these funds, perhaps with participation of the tenants, but landlords or tenants could apply. And, and we're hoping the proposal that we will be sending you is a mixture of tenants paying 30% of whatever their income ends up being, landlords forgiving some portion of the rent in exchange for getting funding from the state to make up a substantial portion of the lost rental income. So, we're calling it, thinking about it as, I think we're calling it a rental market stabilization fund proposal. We will be providing you, as I said, we're working, working on getting one unified proposal that we can then send to you, and we hope that, that we can work together to make it a reality as quickly as possible. But I guess the last thing I would say is that we, we think that it could be, we'd like to see something that can be administered as quickly and easily and with as little red tape as possible, and so, you know, that will, that it may make sense for the state to make use of some of the organizations that you're already working with, whether it's the folks who have run the HPRP programs, or who run the rental assistance program currently. Those may be options. And if you have any other thoughts or questions, I'd be happy to respond to them, but other than that, I think, appreciate the opportunity to, to add my two cents on behalf of the Legal Services Program and the Fair Housing Center and the CLRP.
Thank you, Amy. I appreciate it. One comment I will make, you'll notice, and I will do that again, you'll notice that one of the intended expenses for the ESG funds are the creation of a new eviction prevention program. So, what you're talking about is exactly what we are hoping to get and to use those funds to enhance. Again, our hope is that this is the first round of funding under ESG, and if that is the case, then certainly we would look to continue to address that ongoing issue. So, I thank you for your input. Don't feel the need to have a full-blown proposal for the end of the comment period, but if, assuming our plan goes forward and HUD approves it, we will be doing a request for proposals, probably within the next two weeks. So, maybe two days is a little aggressive, but two weeks is more realistic and hopeful. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Sarah Fox from the Connecticut Coalition and Homelessness. Sarah, unmute yourself, and the floor is yours.
Oh, thanks, Michael. Hi, everyone. Not really fit to be seen, because I have a baby who is teething currently. So, I just wanted to stress, you know, when I look at the funding, it's clear that we, we are going to have a great need as we look to move the people, that are, there are over 900 people currently in hotels today, and we at CCH are really, truly committed to ensuring that the majority of these individuals do not return to shelters at the end of this, and we're also quite concerned as to sort of what the impact to the shelters would be if we have to return those individuals. So, we do understand that there's $4 million for rapid rehousing. We just want to ensure that as few people as possible return back to congregate shelters at the end of this, and that we prioritize ESG dollars to ensure that people are getting housed. Can you hear me?
Sorry, I thank you. I popped the table up, so if anybody wants to see what Sarah was talking about. Anything else, Sarah?
That should be it for me. I just wanted to really put it on record, you know, and we also, we do still have individuals that are in the shelters at the same time, so we're probably more likely looking, and we'll have, we can provide the firm data, but there will be definitely a big need to get all these individuals housed very quickly, and we're working on it, but, and we're working with all of our partners, but just making sure that the clear need to get people into housing quickly is out there. housing quickly is out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We had a couple of people hop on late, so let me go over, if you're interested in speaking and you dialed in, unmute yourself and let us know that you'd like to speak. To unmute yourself, dial star six. If you are on video, then open your chat box and send Laura Watson a note indicating that you would like to speak. Is there anyone else out there interested in commenting at this time?
Can you hear me?
I can, and you are.
Hi. My name is Tammy Dela Cruz. I am the president of the New Speaks Out. We're a nonprofit organization based out of Southeastern Connecticut to help people in addiction. One of our primary sources that we do with our income is to help place and fund people into sober living. And so, part of it is with the rental assistance that we help with the sober houses, it obviously gives them a chance to maintain their recovery. And one of my questions would be a couple of things. Will basic needs increase at all in some of this funding? And I apologize that I am not able to see, because if I'm on the phone, I'm not able to see the itinerary that you guys have listed, the outline. We would also like to know, we would love to be able to extend the funding. We tried to do a couple weeks to a month to help them out, but we have a kind of roadblock that we're kind of having, and some of them are, some people coming out of treatment, haven't been employed, so they're not getting any kind of funding for, sorry, I'm having a loss of words here, unemployment, that's the first thing. And also with the early releases from DOC, that's another, you know, roadblock that we're having is employment is a little bit more difficult for them to find right away, so we would like to be able to increase some time for them to be able to stay in sober living in order for them to maintain their recovery. So, I didn't know if there'd be any funding there that we could be looking for for sober living. And that would be it.
Thank you for the comments. I encourage you, go to the department's website, take a look at the plan. There is intended to be, and I'm looking at it real quick, about $1.2 million plus or minus for the expansion of existing shelter funding, which is for operations and activities. So, I believe that addresses at least in part of what you're looking for, but take a look. And again, please keep in mind, this is the first wave of funding we expect to get. Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you very much. Next up is David Rich. David, please unmute yourself and the floor is yours, sir. If you don't know how to unmute yourself, David, if you're on the phone, it's star six. If you're in Teams, then go to the action bar and click the unmute button. Hmm, all right. David may be having technical difficulties. So, David, we're going to hold you off, and we're going to move over to Kylie Goslin. Kylie, please unmute yourself and the floor is yours. We'll go back to David later.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks so much, Michael, for hosting this. Also wanted to thank Representative McGee and Senator Anwar earlier for their support of CAN funding. That's particularly important right now. There are just two particular, two issues I wanted to highlight. We'll also, the partnership will also be submitting written testimony tomorrow. First, we agree with the Connecticut Fair Housing Center on their rent stabilization plan. This is something we highlighted in the letter that we sent to DOH and other administration officials along with legal services and CT Fair Housing back on April 15th. We realize that there's additional funding coming and there will likely need to be a much larger glut of federal funding in order to fully fund the need on that front. To the extent, it's possible to prioritize the use of some of that small cities funding for rent stabilization that would likely be administered at the state level, we would be in support of that. The second point I wanted to make was regarding ESG. Sarah covered this quite well, so I won't dwell on it, but again, support DOH prioritizing the ESG funding for homeless services, particularly for rehousing, as Sarah articulated well, and for eviction prevention. Per Amy's comments, we agree there's potential wave of evictions coming and therefore a much higher risk of homelessness down the road. We would like to see that 2.8 million, that initial funding, knowing there's hopefully more coming that you've set aside or suggested to set aside for eviction prevention targeted at those most likely or most imminent risk of homelessness in that pool. I know our Reaching Home Prevention Work Group, which CCH and others are a part of, has been putting together some plans and suggestions on how best to do that, but wanted to highlight that particular piece. That's it for me. Well, again, we'll be submitting some written comments tomorrow. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kylie. Just clarity, the state is not allowed to expend CDBG funds directly, but we can and have encouraged our municipal partners to address their specific needs in coordination with their not-for-profit service providers. So, we're, I'm going to try to throw it over to David one more time. Oh, David left. No, I'm not going to throw it over to David. Okay. Laura?
Hi, Michael. David, David here.
Oh, David, you're back. Hey.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Sorry. I couldn't unmute. I think a lot of people would like to see that.
David Rich, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah. First of all, thank you. Thank you for, and for the entire DOH team for jumping on this so, so quickly and in a virtual setting. We really, really do appreciate that. Two questions, just several points. One is to sort of follow on to Senator Arwan, and his points about the CANs. And I don't know if it's too late in this round, but certainly hope you can look at it in the following rounds, that a lot of the resources that are going to the homeless system through the ESG and possibly quite a bit of the CDBG will be going through, through the CANs. And we're certainly all ready, willing, and doing everything possible to absorb these fundings, but it's going to take more additional capacity at the CAN level to do this. Even in normal times, it would take more and given these times. So, hopefully DOH will be looking at that and understanding to get these resources out, we need, we need a strong, vibrant and maturing and growing, growing CAN to be able to tackle these myriad of issues and get this funding out as quickly, quickly as possible. Second is, thank you for putting so much into rapid rehousing. I think that's going to really be just the bulwark of our capacity to house as many, many of the homeless that are still in shelters or on streets or in the hotels. I didn't see it in there, I'm just hoping it's just wrapped up into it, that there is a component of that, a $4 million that's going for staffing. We're going to certainly need more staffing in agencies throughout the state to be able to effectively utilize that rapid, rapid rehousing. And third is, I was really happy to see that you'd put $100,000 in for telehealth, and maybe that's thinking, being cautious and just putting that amount in the beginning and focusing on shelters, but I see it's one of the hopefully many silver linings in what we're, and out of COVID-19 is how quickly we're able to transform our behavioral, especially behavioral health, but also at this point, and addictions to all our homeless and doing in probably in a couple months, what it would have taken us at least five, six years to do in normal circumstances. Now that we have the ability to do telehealth, I really urge that we invest more money in that to really ensure that we are able to touch all our homeless, not just those in the shelters, but those that are in rapidly housing and permanent supportive housing in the coming weeks, weeks and months. So, I'd urge you to look closely at that and hopefully make that a more robust number, if not this time, in the coming installations of funding. And that's it for me. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, David. Thank you for correcting your technical difficulties. We appreciate you getting on and letting us know how important all the activities that we've identified in our plan are. Is there anyone else out there who would like to comment, who has not yet done so? We can and will do generalized questions after I close the public hearing. This is really to start an opportunity for people to comment on the plan. If you have questions, just...
Hi, this is Howie Flexer. I had a question.
Oh, okay. Hang on, Howie, one second. I want to make sure, is there anybody else out there who wants to comment on our current plan?
Yeah, this is Howie Flexer. I had a question.
Okay, well, okay, Howie, go ahead.
Thanks. I was just wondering how are we planning to prioritize which municipalities and which CANs get the funding? Is that going to be based on need, population? I don't know if there was a list of criteria on how the funding will be allocated?
Okay, so, in short, the priorities for CDBG are laid out in that section of the plan. CANs are not eligible to receive CDBG funds directly. They can, as not-for-profit service providers, receive funding through their municipality, receive CDBG money through their municipality. In addition, those service providers are eligible for ESG. Again, in our plan, you will see that we have contracts with 44 current service providers who all participate in the coordinated access network. We will be allocating funds amongst all 44 of the current contracted recipients. Some of them get ESG, some of them get state-funded ESS or SSBG funds. Regardless of what their original source of funds were, all 44 will be in the pool, if you will, for the ESG funding. In addition, some other shelters and service providers who do not currently participate with the state are eligible, and we encourage them to talk to their municipalities about getting some of their CDBG money. One other thing we didn't talk about, because it's not part of our plan, the four largest cities got their own ESG allocations that are in fact equivalent to what the state got. And one of the things that we have been warned about repeatedly is duplication of benefit. HUD will be looking particularly close at duplication of benefit issues to be sure that we are in fact not duplicating funding. FEMA, as an example, public assistance, FEMA public assistance will be available to reimburse a lot of the CAN expenses to date, and we have been working with the coordinated access leaders and their partners to identify those increased costs to date. We will be working with them to submit to FEMA the necessary information to get 75% of that money back right off the top without getting into CDBG or ESG. The remaining 25% may then in fact be eligible for ESG and as a pass-through from the municipality, some of the CDBG money as well. So, duplication of benefits is going to be a key component to how we roll out the specific dollars to the individual not-for-profit service providers. I can't say it any more clearly than that. HUD beat up communities under all the other disaster programs relative to duplication of benefits. We at the State of Connecticut Department of Housing are intimately familiar with the duplication of benefits process, although HUD has yet to issue guidance. We have some idea of what they'll be looking for and have begun putting together a plan on how to address duplication of benefits to make sure we give access to everybody who needs the funds in the best, safest and most accurate way possible. Does that answer your question, Howie? I don't know if we lost Howie. Okay. Now, before I close the public hearing, are there any other public comments? Again, are there any other public comments anyone would like to make about our plan? Then, I thank you all for attending the public hearing, the virtual public hearing, for the amendment to the fiscal 1920 Action Plan for Housing and Community Development intended to address COVID-19 funding. Thank you. Laura, you can stop recording. Now, if anybody has questions...